Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our first, actually, for 2019 televised Wallingford Board of Education meeting. And with that, I'd ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Lavelle, could I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso?
Here.
Ms. Lavek?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Raccio?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto. Eight members present and voting.
Thank you very much. Okay, item four is our Student Board Representatives, and we'll start with Lyman Hall. And I believe we have Alina Fenner here. Welcome.
Hi.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. Tell us, what's going on in Lyman Hall these days?
From the College and Career Center, there will be Credit for Life coming up on February 26. All district sophomores will be traveling to the Park and Rec to participate. Work is underway to collect the permission slips and create personalized profiles for each and every student. For the Lyman Hall Drama Club, they are producing a winter play called Rumors, written by Neil Simon. And the performances will take place on Thursday, February 7, and Friday, February 8, at 7:00 PM in the Robert A. Otto Auditorium at Lyman Hall. In sports, the girls' basketball team has won four straight games, and they play against Amity tonight. Kaylee Lipka scored her 100th, or sorry, her 1,000th career point during the game versus East Haven on January 15. Channel 30 did a story on her on the 11 o'clock news that evening. The hockey team has won seven straight games. Matt Petit was Record Journal Athlete of the Week. The boys' basketball team defeated North Haven and have another game currently tonight. The boys' swim and dive team has made great strides this year. They have already set numerous personal best times. Two new school records have been set by the indoor track team. Mike Toppin in the 300 with a national qualifying time of 35.95, and Carly Jacobs in the 600 with a time of 1.46.03. Many athletes from the indoor track team have already qualified for states. The Unified Sports Team had a home game versus Jonathan Law earlier in the month. It was a great day for the athletes, and a huge thank you to numerous Lyman Hall staff members who came out to support the kids. Upcoming Lyman Hall Best Buddies events. Best Buddies Awareness Month will be in March, when our chapter will have a weekly event. Last year, they hosted events such as Twin Day, Photo Day, Wear Purple, and ended in a monthly chapter versus faculty basketball game. Lyman Hall Unified Sports hosted our first interscholastic game, and the team will be attending two more basketball games and, or two more interscholastic basketball games and four basketball tournaments. Their current fundraiser is a penguin plunge that's being held on March 2 at Crystal Lake in Middletown. Future Farmways of America. The Lyman Hall's FFA chapter welcomed consulting committee members from Wallingford and sending towns to join us after our biannual meeting to host the Ag Science Program Open House, where they were interested eighth graders and parents met teachers and students and received a tour of the facility. Also this fall, students proudly represented Lyman Hall at national convention and the various career development events at the state level. Students also completed community service projects and attended FFA Image Leadership Conference at UConn. In the new year, they're working to support various students as they apply to Supervise Agricultural Experience proficiency awards, Green Hand, Grand Hand chapter and state degrees, and to prepare additional career development event teams to complete at the state level. A message from Mindful Mondays at Lyman Hall. There is an emerging body of evidence that suggests that mindfulness is an effective tool to help reduce impact of stress that stress may have on our minds and bodies utilizing simple breathing and movement practices. The Mindful Monday program at Lyman Hall has been aiming to shed light at the immense benefit that practicing mindfulness can have in the educational environment. Morning announcements for this weekly offering are made on Mondays, and students and staff are all invited to attend from 2:15 to 3:00 PM. In addition to the announcements, Mindful Mondays is being advertised on television screens throughout the cafeterias during all lunch waves. From Lyman Hall Student Council, we are currently updating our bylaws to meet with 21st century standards. Our bylaws are currently outdated and need to reflect and need to reflect and meet the challenges we are confronted with in today's world. This process is presently in the works, and we plan to run the revised bylaws by our administration. Thank you.
Thank you, great job. Always a lot going on. Thank you. Now, from Mark T. Sheehan, we have Marissa. Come on up, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. What's going on in Sheehan?
In the past month, Sheehan has been very busy. We had our midterm exams starting the 15th and ending the 18th. On January 21, we had a day off from school for Martin Luther King Day, and on January 22, the second semester started. On February 26, all Sheehan sophomores will be attending the Credit for Life, where they will get a glimpse into what their future looks like. The seniors are having cap and gown measurements on February 7. Report cards are being sent home to parents this Wednesday, January 30. Today, the juniors had a class meeting in regards to scheduling classes for next year. This past weekend, our jazz band traveled to Berklee College of Music, where they competed. Also this Saturday, our ski club traveled to Mount Snow in Vermont. And lastly, on Saturday, our hockey team challenged Lyman Hall, where the Sheehan Titans fell short, losing 0 to 3. Our Sheehan basketball's current record is 9 to 5, and our girls' basketball current record is 11 to 3. The Lady Titan Track placed second overall Tuesday at SCC East Sectionals, with Kira Connolly taking gold in pole vault. This Friday, the Lady Titan and Boys' Track Team will be going to the STCs. It has been a very busy month at Sheehan, thank you.
Thank you, great job. I can't believe we're already talking about measuring for cap and gowns. That's a little scary, but I understand the time. So, item five, presentation and awards, Dr. Menzo?
Yes, we have a few awards this evening. Our first recognition, I don't believe this student is with us this evening, but we have a student who attends one of the ACES programs. Her name is Iliana Sola. And each year, ACES puts together holiday cards. And Iliana's art was recognized in the card and was put out for distribution by ACES. And we just wanted to congratulate Iliana on her artwork and thank her for representing Wallingford Public Schools so well. And we will send a certificate to her, to hopefully, to her, so that she can recognize the fact or appreciate the fact that we really, truly, truly are so impressed by her artwork, but also appreciate again her willingness to share this with us and share it with everyone else. Because you can be an artist, there's a lot of artists that don't share their artwork. And the whole idea, you know, is to hopefully, at some point, to be able to share your artwork. And it takes a lot of courage, but she has talent as well, so we're very proud of her. And we just wanted to share that. So we thank Ms. Lavek for bringing that to our attention. And, you know, we really are very fortunate. We've had students, over the years, be honored in this way, so we want to thank her. At this time, I'd like to invite, we have our debate team here from Sheehan, so I'd like to bring up our principal, Mr. Enzo Zacco, who's going to help share the names of the students. But basically, the fact is that this debate team has done an incredible job. And they were, they placed first in the regionals and, you know, for the state tournament, which was fantastic. And over the years, this group has grown. This group has really come from just being something that kind of got started, and we've had some students graduate, but the group has really taken on a lot of hard work and has really been very successful. And we wanted to bring them here tonight. I personally think that this is one of the best things that we can encourage students to do, is to really get involved with something like this. It's tremendous amount of thinking that has to go into it, and it's on-the-spot thinking. You have to do research, right, a little bit of research. You have to be ready to, you know, give your rebuttal, give your comments. It's incredibly challenging. But there are skills that will benefit you in everything you do in life. Because nothing ever, and if somebody tells you this, that what I'm going to say is wrong, but nothing ever goes as planned. No matter what in life, nothing goes as planned. So you have to have the level-headed nature, the agility of mindset, the agility to be able to think quick on your feet, quickly on your feet. And, you know, actually sounds somewhat intelligent. And you obviously did that with flying colors. So I am very, very proud of you. I know that many of you participated in the middle school program and some of them, maybe some of the mock trial potentially. And I think that just lends itself to what we do and what you've done at the high school. So I'm going to turn over to Mr. Zacco, who could, if you want to say a few words, you're more than welcome to, but then also share the names of the students.
Thank you, thank you. So it's only been about five years that we've participated in this Connecticut Mock Trial program. And there's over 100 schools that typically participate, and we consistently have made the regionals, semifinals, and gone all the way down to, it sounds like, the final four. So it's been very impressive. So great congratulations to all of you. So some of the students are here tonight. Just read the names? All right. Okay, great. And then if any of you have any words to say, I'm sure you have a moment as well. All right, the students who participated, Sarah Akila, Stephen Begley, Chantel Boten, Koi Bolat, Jillian Burns, Andrew Carey. Oh, sorry. Going way too fast, sorry. I knew they weren't all here, but I apologize. I thought we were calling them all. All right. Who else do we have? I'll pause there, anybody else that I haven't called yet? Natalie DiDomenico, who's not here. Erin Gamble. Heather Ray Gadaun. Ainsley Yivanna. Brennan Legassi. Ryan Legassi. William Miller. Ryan Morrell. Shandani Patel. Jake Poet. Joseph Tang. Sarah Tureen. Isabella Welch. And Michael Warmenstorf.
All right, I want to hear, what was the last, like, what was the thing that you had to do last in the competition? What was the topic?
So our case this year is basically a civil lawsuit, where a young person, who, they're freshmen in college, they went to go celebrate Constitution Day at the Capitol, and they were very excited to talk to this specific person. Due to, like, family, they had a family grievance, and they ran through this very important celebration, holding a scroll case. And when they were commanded to stop, they did not. They just continued running. And then they got fired with a taser. And then that shot didn't work, so they ripped it off and continued running again, up a set of stairs. And then they got fired again, this time the taser worked. They fell down the stairs and then suffered a compound complex fracture. And now they're suing the security company, saying that they wrongfully did it because the security guard had a personal vendetta against the person. Our A team does both sides. We have six people, so we have to do both, whereas our B team, our freshman and sophomore team does. Yeah, because they had enough people.
One thing that I said what? Okay, so I play the lead witness for plaintiff and defense on the A team. And one thing that I said. Oh, yeah, that was an important part. So basically, we have this joke, and it's like an inside joke, because we all know Ainsley's direct from both sides. And it's, "Do you have a gun? Do you have a knife? Do you have a weapon of any kind?" And we all cited that on the bus, because our mentor was like, "Did you guys ask about weapons?" And we were like, "Do you have a knife? Did you have a gun? Did you have a weapon of any kind?" Which the answers all know.
Plaintiff didn't have anything on her?
No.
Okay. It was just a document. All right, somebody from the other side, from the eight, anybody else from the other side? Here.
So for defense, right?
Yeah.
So for defense, I play the expert witness. His name is Terry Spate. He's the leading museum security designer in the eastern United States. And, thank you, it's quite an achievement. And my whole deal is that I just tell, that I just tell the court that, you know, the security plans for that day at the Capitol were top-notch, and that the fault is with the plaintiff, who had ran, who had run at these dignitaries with this scroll case, which could have contained a number of dangerous objects. So that's our side.
So what did you all learn from this, this case? Anything? What did you learn?
Well, so I played Andy Archer, the person who ran away. And what I learned is, you have to, like, in life, you have to think deeper and, like, be in character. I, like, my character is really weird from being myself. Like, I really try to stay in character, and I just know what I know and get to know more information with a lot of research, collective knowledge, and stuff like that.
And that'll help you as you continue in your performing career at Sheehan, with all your acting that you do. So, well, thank you so much. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I didn't mind doing it either. And you did great, as expected, so congratulations, Ms. McKay.
Yes, thank you. So first off, I want to say congratulations to our students. You know, as a Board of Ed member, you make us so proud every single day. And when you go out and compete and you represent, you not only represent Sheehan, you represent Wallingford. And clearly, by listening to you folks, you do it in a fantastic manner. So I want to say congratulations and thank you. But I also want to turn my attention to the moms and dads in the audience. As a mom and dad, you know, who raise kids, thank you. Your commitment to your children is a commitment to the Board of Ed. It's a commitment to our community at large. And, you know, we all know, everybody's running in a million directions. And the fact that you're just sitting here tonight and taking pictures of your kids and doing all great stuff, thank you for your commitment as a family to us at Board of Ed and to your students to make, really, the most superior citizens that we could possibly ask for. So thank you for your commitment. Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Okay, are there any questions from the audience? Okay, so I'm just going to say, I'm sure you all want to sit and watch our riveting meeting. But if for some reason you want to leave, I can't imagine, now would be the perfect opportunity for you folks to take an exit. Enjoy your night. Thank you, again, congratulations. So I'll give it one more shot for any questions from the audience before I entertain a motion to go into executive session. Okay, so can I get a motion to go into executive session for items E1 through E4?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, we're in executive session. Okay, we are back, and can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
I need a second?
Sure.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, out of executive session. Okay, moving along on our agenda. Can I get a motion to accept consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.6?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. As a result of that, we have no items removed from the consent agenda. We'll move on to number nine, correspondence, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, we have received one donation. We would like to thank Ann Evans from the US Department of Commerce for a cash donation in the amount of $3,200 to the Wallingford School District for professional development.
Excellent, thank you so much. Moving along for committee reports, starting with 10.1, ACES representative.
That'll be me tonight.
Okay. Go for it, Mrs. Costelli, thanks.
So at the ACES January Board Meeting, the Director's Report, Mr. Dr. Danhey introduced Pat Patrice McCarthy from CAE, who gave an overview of some legislative information, now that we have a new legislative body in place. Shared services will be one of their priorities of this administration, just as it was of the last administration. CAE explained this to the new and to the old legislators, that the rests already do a lot of that. And hopefully, we're not going to revisit, you know, a regional calendar requirement again, so. Any legislator has the ability to submit a bill, so there are many already that have been submitted. Many of these bills don't get very far, but many do. Patrice did point out that a few are dealing with curriculum, and among them, African-American history, climate change, and civics. This means some legislator or legislators are proposing a bill or bills that would require these topics to be part of every district's curriculum. Additionally, she talked about the many task forces that are in place and gave some information on a few of them. I'll share a little bit of that. So one of them, for example, is fingerprinting of non-employees. For example, substitute teachers. There's one such task force to handle that. Due to FBI constraints, the same individual is fingerprinted multiple times when they work for many districts. And they must pay a $75 fingerprinting fee each and every time. So they're working to develop some sort of software that will eliminate this redundant and costly process. Disruptive students is another task force. The desire here is to have every Board of Ed receive a monthly report of every instance of disruptive behavior, which is due to, which is to include the school and the grade of the student or students. Obviously, in smaller districts, it might become very easy to figure out who the actual students involved are, and that's a violation of their privacy. So this will, this one will hopefully cease to be pursued. And another task force is looking at the educational cost share formula, which I believe is one that comes up periodically and is rather complicated to play with. So more to come, I'm sure, on the legislative front. Dr. Danhey also reported that the, or Dr. Danhey reported that the purchase of the Wintergreen Building is no longer being pursued as they could not come to agreement on an acceptable purchase price. In lieu of Wintergreen, there was later discussion under the new business portion of the agenda of pursuing a five-year lease of the Gateway College Building in North Haven. Dr. Danhey also informed the board that the Leader Hill project has been reimbursed $10.3 million from the state. And Karen can speak more to what that project is, because I don't remember. I know it's been on for quite a while, but.
Yes, they're going to be closing some of the facilities that they have on Skiff Street.
Right.
There are big traffic problems and other things there, and moving it to Leader Hill.
Okay, thank you. For curriculum and instruction, a professional development opportunity was presented. The topic is antisemitism and building tolerance. There's a 3D, there'll be a three-day PD, February 7, March 20, February 28 and March 21. I'm sure Mrs. Latour is already aware of this. And if not, I'll leave her the information that they presented. Under new business, the board did approve administration to move forward in pursuing a five-year lease of the Gateway College Building for the purpose of serving as the WIMS replacement facility. The board also approved allotting a one hour of sick time per 40 hours of work for part-time adjunct instructors. Again, one hour per 40 hours for adjunct professors. They work part-time as it is. The sick time is, use it or lose it, there will be no payout upon leaving ACES. There was also a proposal to provide children, grandchildren, and siblings of ACES employees preference in the magnet school lottery application process at ACES Magnet Schools, which is WIMS, TMS, and the ECA. After much discussion and many concerns, this item was tabled for revision and further discussion. There was definitely concern in moving in this direction. The first reading of a policy update was presented. It is the same policy that this board was presented with last month regarding restraint, seclusion, and exclusionary timeout. Again, changes are specific to language that we have to include in the policy to be in compliance with the law. The standing agenda items that were reviewed and approved are the December minutes, the fiscal report, the human resources report, and the early head start report. There was a brief executive session regarding student matters. The next meeting is February 14, and there are 70 Wallingford students that attend the ACES schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Costelli.
Any question?
Yeah, we're thinking alike. Okay, thank you again. Item 10.2, Wintergreen Magnet School Steering Committee, Mrs. Latour?
The January meeting was originally scheduled for last week. It was rescheduled to this Thursday, so we have nothing new to report.
No problem. Item 10.3, School to Career and Business Think Tank, Mrs. Costelli or Dr. Menzo? I don't know. You guys.
You do it, you do it. You do much better.
You guys fight over this every month. Of course, I didn't bring my notes.
I figured you were going to do it. So at the last Business Think Tank, we had, it was actually a smaller turnout. We had a couple people whose calendars had it at the wrong time. But what we talked about, and Rob Covey presented information about the pre-apprenticeship program that we're looking to put in place for this coming fall for students in manufacturing, we're also looking to do it in medical careers. So actually, Rob and I, with the assistance of Joe Mara, are pulling together two different meetings over the next four weeks with local manufacturers. We're also, we're going to kind of get a feel for where they are, because then we have to have them meet with the Department of Labor to have them sign up to be a pre-apprenticeship, approved pre-apprenticeship program. We're doing this in advance of this fall's pipeline program that we have that's funded by AT&amp;T. So that was really the focus of the meeting. And we were fortunate, we did have our friend from the German Chamber of Commerce, who now is going to be working in Connecticut full-time. He was traveling to New York every day from Rocky Hill. So he's going to be in Connecticut. So he's going to be able to be more active in our system.
Great. Any questions or comments from the board? PTAC update, Dr. Menzo, you want to roll? Oh, is it Mrs. Latour, sorry?
In our January Systemwide PTAC meeting, we had several agenda items to review the facility study update with the group, as well as the 1920 budget. We had a quick presentation about the Red Flex bus cameras. All of this is linked into the minutes that are on our website. Additionally, some discussion was held regarding technology in the schools during unstructured times, such as lunch, as well as discussing a safer Internet day, resources provided by Brian Revard, the chairperson, which is also linked into the minutes. Our February meeting is canceled due to a conflict with the Board of Education meeting for February. So the next meeting is March 19 at 6:00 PM at 100 South Turnpike Road. for February, so the next meeting is March 19th at 6:00 p.m. at 100 South Turnpike Road.
Thank you, Mrs. Latour. Any questions? Yeah, or comments? Yeah, go ahead. Mrs. Raccio?
Thanks. I just wanted to comment that we did renew with Red Flex the bus contract. It was actually -- it's been three years already that the bus cameras have been on there. It's hard to believe it went that fast. But I just wanted to comment that Red Flex does not always renew. We have the two-year option, but because of the partnership with the police department and their efforts, and the high rate of issuance of the tickets that they're getting, because Red Flex does not cost the town anything, they would just work off of commission, it was fiscally feasible for them to renew the contract. So that's kudos to the police department in helping keeping the children safe and the community safe, because that was not a guarantee.
Thanks for that update. I appreciate that. Thank you. Item 10.5 is Plan of Conservation and Development. Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing new.
Okay. 10.6, Food Service Strategic Plan Committee. I know Mr. Menzur's not with us this evening, but I don't know. Dominic? Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, Dave couldn't make it, but he just sent me a note, just wanted to bring an update. We met -- a couple of us met on the 15th of January, planning the Wallingford Junior Chef Competition, and it's going to be the same date as the District Wellness Fair on March 14th.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Any questions or comments from the Board? Okay, great. Lumped together, 10.7 and 10.8 for Mr. Duptula. Stage lighting and renovation updates, as well as the four-school window replacement project.
Okay, the stage lighting and renovation project is done, but we haven't closed out paperwork yet. The four-school window replacement project, we still have work to do at Lyman Hall and Highland, and that will be scheduled sometime in March.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, moving on to item 11, Old Business. I do not believe we have any. Item 12, Instructional Committee. Mrs. Corso?
Thank you.
You're up.
We will start with a resignation this evening. I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept with regret the resignation of Simone Crouch, effective February 2nd, 2019.
I second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Okay. The next is a leave of absence. So I make a motion that a leave of absence for Kathryn Bates be approved without pay and in accordance with the provision of the current teacher's contract from January 22nd through February 15th. Second?
Second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. And lastly, I make a motion that the Board of Ed approve the appointment of the following candidate to a teaching position for the 1819 school year contingent upon proper Connecticut certification, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. This is a Cook Hill position, English as a Second Language position, for Katie Checo.
I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. We have a presentation about our new revised regulations concerning physical restraint. Dr. Menzo or Mrs. Latour? Sorry.
So in front of you, this is the second read for the regulation and the policy brought forward at the Instructional Committee meeting at the beginning of the month. These are both revisions due to changes in statute. The shaded areas in both policies are what the additions are, and the strikeouts are what would be removed.
Thank you. Any questions?
I would just ask that if anyone has any clarifications, concerns, or questions, you can certainly call me or email me before the next reading, which would be at the end of February.
Which is actually our third reading and final reading. So this is the last call. I mean, if there's any concerns, this would be the time to make them. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And administering medication to students?
Sorry, it's the same. I kind of lumped them together at the beginning. So the administering medication to students, this is also changes in state statute. The shaded areas are where we added information in as it relates to training all school bus drivers, and as it relates to possessing self-administering medication, whether it's through an inhaler or an EpiPen on the school bus. So this was a minor change, just an update.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? That's our second reading?
Correct. It is the second reading. So like the other one, if anyone has any concerns or changes that they would like to have made, please bring that forward shortly, because the third read will be the February 19th Board of Education meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Corso. Item 13, Operations Committee. Mrs. Leback?
Yes, thank you, ma'am, Chair. The Operations Committee meeting took place on January 14th, 2019. The meeting minutes for the December 10th, 2018 meeting were approved with corrections. The Board of Education financial report for 2018 and the cafeteria financial reports for November and December 2018 were reviewed in committee and accepted under the consent agenda this evening. The financial forecast through December 2018 was reviewed with a projected unencumbered balance of $783,369 noted at this time. The cafeteria financial reports for November, December 2018 were reviewed. In November 2018, a profit of $17,621 was noted. However, the December 2018 figures indicated a loss of $24,235. This loss was attributed to the need to purchase products to be used after the winter break in January 2019, payroll, holiday pay, and fewer serving days. A concerted effort is being made to control product and labor costs. There has been an increase in meals served at all levels. The initial budget presentation was provided by Dr. Menzo. An overview of the sustained and strategic budgets took place. New initiatives, changing student demographics, and uncontrollable budget costs were some of the areas highlighted. On January 23rd, 2019, the first budget workshop took place. The Board reviewed the proposed sustained budget first, and then reviewed the strategic plan prioritization list. Board of Education members were provided with written answers to questions posed to the administration regarding the 2019-2020 budget. Further discussions regarding the strategic plan prioritization list and the food service budget are slated for the next budget workshop on January 30th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. in the Board of Education, Boardroom 100 South Turnpike Road.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Leback. Any questions or comments from Board members? Seeing none. Item 14, New Business. I do not believe we have any. And item 15 is Administration Report. Dr. Menzo, you're up.
Thank you very much. I will piggyback or follow along with Ms. Leback's recent comments about the budget. I just would say that we continue to communicate with families, as we've done in the past. Either a day or two after our workshop, we send out the link to our website, where we constantly chronicle the events of the Board in their discussion of the budget. So on Wednesday of this week, we have our second workshop. There'll be an update that'll go out to the families by Friday, that again, will keep them informed. We also keep that information on our website, actively there and always updated. And then in my Monday memo, usually following that meeting, I put that there, and that goes out on my blog, so that it's really open and accessible to all community members that might need or want that information. Again, I think that, you know, again, I keep saying that the budget is a marathon. It's not a sprint for certain, so we need to just take this slowly. But I think as I continue to read the newspaper, and I read about other school districts' budgets and other school districts' percentage increases, even where we are, where we left the other night at a 2.89 after the Board looked through the strategic plan, and that was not commitment on the Board, but that was just initial discussion, we're far below everyone in our area. Now, I'm not saying that that means that it's a good number, or it's the right number, but I'm just saying that in the context of what we're doing, where districts continue to have to reduce services to students in order to get below a four, we're able to sustain services as we move forward. And I just want to thank my administrative team and our teachers, our pairs, all of our union members throughout the district for their continued support and effort in this area. So I just would be remiss if I didn't bring that up. I do, going along with the budget timeline and frame of mind, donations. As you saw tonight, we had another donation. We continue to get them. I do want to recognize Toyota of Wallingford for making a $400 donation to E.C. Stevens. And I just want to mention, these donations are not being called out because of anything other than they don't meet the threshold for the Board of Education to take them on consensus. And usually, as we all know, Mr. Reynolds speaks to the ones on that. I speak to these because they're under a $500 threshold, so I just wanted to clarify that. Not that I've ever been asked that question, but as I'm doing this, I don't want to think that these are special, because I'm saying them versus Mr. Reynolds. His are just as special. So the thing is, there was another donation, monetary donation, from the Wallingford Police Department, actually, to E.C. Stevens for $80. So we appreciate that. The Eatery donation for an event from the College and Career Specialists of $125 worth of food, Niels Donuts. Again, same event, approximately a donation of $30 worth of donuts. And last but not least, Chick-fil-A, a donation of $400 worth of food to an event sponsored by the College and Career Specialists. So we continue to have such incredible partnerships with our community. I mean, there are very few people we ask that do not step up, and I just, I think we are somewhat of the envy, as I talk to other superintendents, and I know we continue to hear this from other Boards of Education, that we have just such a really committed community to our district. And that ties into the next thing, talking about commitment, is we continue with our STEM Steering Committee. We meet every other month. That group, this last Monday, we met, and Ms. McKay was there, Ms. Latour was there, and I have to say, what an amazing meeting. It's just so incredible just to sit back and listen to this room of voices that represent all sectors of our community. Holy Trinity is part of our team. You know, SCOW, the Town Library, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, Student Representation...
Actually, our mayor attends those meetings.
The mayor attends every single one. We now have membership from Senator Murphy's office. His aide is at all of our meetings. We also have, we have a researcher now who caught wind of what we're doing, and he's doing his dissertation, his doctoral dissertation from North Carolina State, on the process that we've undertaken. We have parents involved in the committee, and I have to say that, you know, right now, we're in a very good place. The work of this group right now is focusing on accountability measures. So while it's great to have a lot of activities, we have to try to turn the, you know, move the needle, so to speak, on our problem statement. And our problem statement really focused on perceptions, and that we needed to make sure that we change perceptions of our youngest students and potentially community members, as well as their parents, that these positions in STEM in our town are viable, valuable positions. So in doing so, that then would impact the vitality of our community in terms of lifestyle and, of course, the economy. So I just want to share and just, tonight, just really continue to thank the members of that group that are committed and are willing to meet each month. We are continuing our campaign. We have Wallingford STEM, which is our hashtag, and also our Twitter handle and Facebook handle. So we're trying, and we have an incredible parent who's working with us. Her background lends itself to some of this. We do have a logo that's being finalized. We had a logo contest, so it's a student-generated logo that we'll hopefully brand and utilize as we continue to move forward. We have still a long road to travel. This is the first paver, so to speak, in that backyard system that you might want to install, but we feel that we're definitely moving in the right direction. Our student voice on the committee, we have a graduate, our buddy Rajan, who is on the committee. We couldn't get rid of Rajan. We needed him involved. We weren't going to let him get away. And we have Audrey Larson, who is an amazing individual. So we're looking to, again, grow this. We are now forming a more solidified district STEM committee. So we're working with our career technical education coordinator, a math coordinator, and our science coordinator to then work within the management teams to really activate that as we move forward. So a lot to be proud of in that area, and again, it's just another tribute to the fact that when there is a cause in Wallingford, and we ask people to participate, they do. And I just want to say thank you, and I think that our students are truly going to benefit and are already benefiting from these partnerships. The other thing that I just want to mention, and this goes back to partnerships, and I guess that's my theme for what I'm presenting this evening or sharing, is PTAC, Systemwide PTAC. I don't know about the other members that were at the meeting the other night, but I know Ms. Raccio was there. Again, Ms. Latour was there. There was just the synergy in the room, and I don't know, maybe there's a better word, but there was just a willingness for people to participate. We had a parent who came for the first time, and I think the best compliment at the end was that he said, "This was kind of fun. I, you know, I liked this hour," or, well, two hours away from, you know, the family and, you know, had time to talk. And it was, it was really, I think those meetings, again, as I'm fortunate, when I do have an opportunity every so often to speak to my colleagues, I think we're in a good place. And as Ms. Raccio said, this is the third year of a significant initiative that the PTAC took on. And this is just one of many initiatives that the PTAC has taken on. And so I just want to say thank you to the parents. Every school, nearly every school is represented every single month, and I think that is somewhat unheard of. And I think that there is a willingness to talk and share, ask questions. You know, it's not, it's a very open meeting. It's a very, I feel, it's a very warm environment that we've fostered as a team with the parents, and I just want to say thank you for that, because I think it's pretty cool. And I know that's, you know, maybe sounds trite, but again, when you talk to your colleagues, and even as Board members, I know Roxanne and working with CAE, it's not necessarily the same way everywhere you go. Now, could we be better? Of course. And I know that we'll be held to a high standard, which we should be, and we appreciate that. So with that said, I also want to announce that parents will be getting an email from Linda, probably tomorrow or Wednesday, the latest. Carrie suggested or stated that one of the topics was about Safe Internet Day, and it is February 5th. And again, the chairperson, Brian Revard, under the auspices of PTAC, is going to send out a message to families with some links that they can talk about with their students. Talk about how students could actively and proactively and appropriately engage with technology, as well as families. So we see this as a continued message, and we appreciate that, because those messages really do resonate parent to parent. So we're going to be looking to have this go out system-wide, but then also have it restated through our principal newsletters. We find that that's a really great place. Parents read the principal newsletters at the elementary schools and middle schools and high schools, but we'll send you a copy of it also, so you know what we're talking about. So if you have grandkids or any other, you know, some of you still have students in our district, or older children, this is not a bad thing to have a conversation about. So just thoughtful conversations, and it all stemmed from the fact that people want to do right by the children of Wallingford. So those are just some of the things we have, as you heard tonight from both high schools, a lot of activities going on. There's just a lot of enthusiasm I'm looking forward to. This is Lyman Hall. I think it's one of the first years, if I know during my tenure, that they're having a drama production. They've brought back the Drama Club, which is nice. They always do a musical.
Right.
Later in the spring, usually, or first or second week of May, but this is now the first drama production of Rumors that they're going to be doing next Thursday and Friday night. So that's great to see that come back. I know Sheen still has their drama production. That's why one of the students tonight who's getting recognized, she's always in every year. But it's nice to see those activities increasing. And I do want to say again, and I know I share with the Board and all staff, the work that was done with the best buddies, excuse me, the Unified Theater, right after the holiday when we got back, was absolutely amazing. I sat with Mr. Corso, and he and I were just, we had goosebumps, because that is a great program where students with disabilities and students that don't have disabilities are able to work together, and there's just so much, there's just so much synergy and so much, and I know that's a word I used already, but there is, there's so much compassion. And so I invited them, and I don't know if it's going to work out, and hopefully, we should have a convocation next year, because we don't have any projects going on, but I have invited them to come and perform at convocation, because I think it just, they sang, or they, well, they sang and they performed to a song, "This Is Me," from The Greatest Showman. to a song, "This Is Me" from The Greatest Showman. And if, I, I put the words in my morning message a few weeks back and the words really resonate with everyone that, you know, we all think we're so different, but in the end, we're not. And most importantly, that we need to, even those times when we are kind of being discarded, we need to know that somebody else could help us have a voice. And I just really think that was a phenomenal opportunity. So again, thank you to that group and I'm sorry to go on and on, but those, that was probably one of the most moving things in a long time. And I also would draw your attention and those in the public to my Monday message today where I put a grateful video. It was a video that was put together by one of our EL staff or two of our EL staff members. And I have to say, it, it really truly does represent Wallingford. And I think that if you haven't seen this, I would suggest you see it because you'll know how diverse our community truly is. With 43 languages being spoken in our district, this video really does hit home with all of the different, the different cultures being represented. So again, we don't always highlight that and not because we're hiding it, it's just that we have so many other things going on, but there's just such a tremendous amount of wealth of diversity that we should be really grateful for. And I think the video does say that and through the, the words of the most important individuals, the children. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Menzo. You know, I just want to echo a sentiment that you started with, which was the whole idea of collaboration amongst your staff and central office for the budget. I, I've been doing this for, this is my 14th budget and I don't ever remember being in January and being well under 3% for a sustained strategic plan budget. So, you know, in a way, you're making our job a little bit easier, but I know there was a, just the effort that goes into getting us to a place like that is really an effort from everybody, you know, looking to see how they can consolidate and where we can cut corners, but not at the expense of our students, but really be thoughtful about how we can do things better and more efficiently. And your team has done that and I just wanted to say thank you. Because again, it makes our job here on Board of Ed that much easier that we're talking about, you know, a 2.6, 2.7, 2.8, you know, somewhere in that range potentially for a sustained strategic budget is really phenomenal, be there in January. So I just want to make that reference. As far as announcements, the following dates that I want to share with you have all a 6:00 PM start time and they would take place in our Board of Ed conference room at 100 South Turnpike, Turnpike Road. So starting with this Wednesday, January 30th, we have a special operations committee which is committed to our budget and continuing in the budget process. Monday, February 4th is our instruction committee meeting. Wednesday, February 6th, if we need it, is earmarked for another special operations committee meeting for budget, if needed. And Monday, February 11th is our operations committee, which hopefully will have a budget really solidified, solidified in place that we can take consensus on and move forward for our televised meeting in February and now turn it over to the mayor. So with that, our televised meeting here, oh, actually, that's a change. So normally, our televised meeting is obviously here at Parisi Town Hall Auditorium, is a change. So it will be Tuesday, February 19th, and it will be at our Board of Education conference room, but at 6:30 PM. So that is definitely a change from being here. So with that, if there's nothing else from the board, I'll adjourn this meeting. Have a nice evening. Thank you.